Go ahead and get started, everyone. All right, I'm going to call to order the May 21th come council meeting at 5:32. First up is Pledge of Allegiance, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united by God as individual to justice. All right, roll call, please.
Alder Radafrada.
Here.
Alder Clouter. Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Crowsey.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Schroeder.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell. You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. All right, so first is just kind of welcome over remarks. First of all, congratulations to all those who won the most recent election and for those of you who have another year, lucky you. So I think for myself, you know, a few small things I want to go over real quick. There's a lot to learn, especially for the new people. I'm sure that you're going to be swimming a little bit, but please ask questions, you know, ask questions of myself, Pat Marsh, other council people, especially those who've been around for a while, you know, make sure to ask questions because we've all been there at one point in time. No question is a silly question or a bad question and there's a lot to know and remember. So I think that's really important. I think one thing that I feel like over the last year we've done a great job of is being more professional on this body and really improving that tremendously. And so I really hope to continue that over this next, at least year, and actually three years personally for myself. And so I think that's a real key thing for me as well. Today for the new people, you got your city email set up. I believe we've given you information on that already, so you can start using that. And really you need to use that when you're doing city business because everything you do is now open records. And if you're using personal email, you need to then give us emails when someone does open records request and it's just a lot easier and simpler because if you're using your city email, our IT department can go through and just look through past emails and do search, search for keywords and stuff like that. So make sure you're using that. And I know that our city attorney will talk about reply all and why you shouldn't do that to everyone on council, so I'll let her do that later. I think, you know, a few things here, it's a lot challenging obviously with a lot of people online, but you're always welcome to go online, especially during this pandemic or here in person. I'm going to do my best to make sure to, make sure everyone online, I, you know, raise your hand and I'll get you in here. In general though, when you want to speak, kind of raise your hand and if there's a lot of people want to speak, I'll create a list and just kind of go down the list as well as we do discussion here. And I think, you know, hopefully throughout the year, once in a while we do have some things that generate a lot of discussion and they're not going to be unanimous and that's all right. If we, everything we voted on this year is unanimous, then that would be a problem frankly. There should be some things that we disagree on, but make sure we're keeping it civil, professional, that's really the key for me. Nothing's personal, you know, if you, if your vote doesn't go your way, just move on, no big deal. Let's see here. Otherwise, another thing I just wanted to mention, if the, for some reason we are talking about something that has a potential conflict for you and you want to abstain from that discussion and from that vote because you don't, you either can't vote on it or it looks unprofessional or might be bad, if you want, let me know ahead of time, that'd be great. You don't have to, but really when the discussion starts, you should probably say, I'm abstaining and kind of even almost pull your chair back a little bit, not participate in discussion, not vote. It just helps the public, I think, to know that, hey, you know, for whatever reason and maybe it's, you know, your work does something with whatever we're dealing with right now, that you're not participating in this discussion. I think that really helps a lot in transparency. Other than that, I think probably the last thing I'll say, and this is really for the new people, there's obviously a lot going on right now and a lot you're learning. I would think that there's probably, I think other people would say this, when you're brand new, there's a lot going on and people end up asking a lot from you, especially early on. And I think that other people on this council and the past people on councils would say that, you know, you gotta be a little careful because some people will try and take advantage of you and your inexperience and ask you to commit to things and do things that you just don't even have any idea what that's about, right, you know, early on. And so that could be builders, developers, it could be other council members, maybe the mayor, hopefully not. But, you know, really just kind of be careful of those things, especially early on. And again, you know, ask lots of questions because some people will try and take advantage of your naivety and your inexperience. So one thing I've seen, I've learned is that builders and developers will want you to commit on the spot and they won't tell you 100% of the information that you need. So I always like to say, well, that sounds interesting, let me talk with staff and, you know, I'll see more. And not, don't commit on the spot, that's kind of what I tend to do anyway. And Pat can always tell you the whole story. Other than that though, I mean, that's just kind of basic stuff and I'm really excited for this year and hopefully you are as well. And I'll turn over to Pat now to go ahead and say whatever you want to say.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, welcome to the new members. My position here with the city is sort of a conduit between yourselves and the rest of the staff. So whenever you need anything, whenever you're looking for one of the department heads to work on something or to bring something up at a meeting, you should probably direct that through me and I'll work with the individual department heads to try to get that information or that item moving along for you. What we normally do, and we won't be doing it this year because of the current crisis situation we're in, but we usually have the departments here at a, at a meeting in close proximity to your election or your first meeting and have them provide a summary of what they do, what their department does. But given the situation, this year, all of those will be videotaped and you'll have a link you'll be able to go to. And each of the department heads will give you, you know, five, six, seven minute summary of what their position is and what the work of their department does. So that doesn't mean that you'll get the whole gist of everything in that time period. What I encourage all of you to do, even the ones that have been in office, is to come and meet with myself and/or the department heads one-on-one to get a really good idea of, of what we do on a daily basis, the areas in which we can help you out and, you know, just the areas in which you're interested too. Some of you will receive, all of you will receive your committee assignments tonight and it may be a good opportunity for you to connect by telephone with those staff members that chair those meetings, I'm sorry, that staff those meetings and to get an idea of what those meetings are like and what some of your responsibilities may be. So again, I'm here to be a communication tool, to be a resource for all of you and I look forward to working with all of you. And again, don't, don't hesitate to give me, give me a phone call or shoot me an email at this point in time. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so next up is election of council president and I'll first take nominations and after we have nominations and people accept those, I will do a vote. Now traditionally we do that kind of a secret ballot, but with, you know, five people online, it's really challenging to do that and I just, I couldn't figure out a way to do it completely anonymous. I'm going to ask, I guess, tonight for people just kind of verbally do their vote. If people are concerned about that, the only other option I could think of is that people online can text me, I'm going to know who you voted for, I guess, which, so it's not completely anonymous. But, you know, if people are uncomfortable just saying their vote, then we can do that. It's just a little bit of a challenge, obviously with the pandemic here, we're trying to make some adjustments. Future years, hopefully it is anonymous again, but if someone does have an issue or concern, I'm very happy to kind of have people text me and have people just here in the council chambers write down their vote as well. So, I mean, I'm happy to do that if people are uncomfortable verbalizing who they want to vote for, for council president.
Aaron?
Yeah, Dorothy.
Was there discussion about setting up a Survey Monkey or something that could be anonymous?
It's trying to get it entered in and then sent out and then people, it's just the complexity for that just wasn't something that we decided to try and figure out. So if someone wants, you know, you know, raise a hand or something like that, if you want it to be anonymous, or at least kind of anonymous, you know, please do so now and I'm happy to do it that way if someone's uncomfortable. No problem with that. All right. Seeing, sorry Shane, I don't know if you're raising your hand. Other than that, I guess we'll go ahead and proceed with any nominations for council president. I have Gabriella first.
I'd like to nominate Julia Radafrada.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. Julio, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I will accept the nomination.
All right, excellent. And is there anyone else that?
Shannon.
Shannon, do you have a nomination?
She's muted.
I, I got it.
Okay.
Julia.
Oh, also Julia, all right. Then we don't need to do it again. Good. All right, any nominations for anyone besides Julia? All right, see none. Well, this is going to be pretty easy then. All right, then I'm going to close nominations and since we have just one candidate, Julia, do you want to speak to why you want to be council president at least?
Yes, I have, can I, I have, I wrote on a speech, a little one, if I can share with all of you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, so why I am running for council president. So fellow Alders, I'm Mayor Richardson. I am running for council president because I deeply enjoy serving the city of Fitchburg and my constituents. During my five years of service on this council, I have gained broad experience in functioning of the city and I have proven to be an experienced, responsible and community-focused leader. I have worked in a wide variety of commission, including finance, plan and CEDAC. I have taken on leadership role, including chair of multiple committees and for Fitchburg. I have, I have proposed resolution and thoughtful amendment to the capital improvement plan and city budget. Throughout all this work, I have successfully collaborated with three different mayors, current and past Alders, city staff, committee members and neighbors. Fitchburg is a diverse, vibrant and growing city that needs leaders with integrity who will work together, treat other people's opinions and perspective with respect and also reflect the population that we represent. I will be a strong leader who has the knowledge and experience necessary to work collaboratively on the important issues facing Fitchburg and who understand the characteristic and composition of our community. As your council president, I will help this body reach its potential so we can build a safe, dynamic and inclusive city that provides opportunity for all of our residents. I look forward to working with each of you to continue our proven record of improving the quality life and growth of our city by advocating for sustainable budget, a strong neighborhood, business expansion and safety and equity in our neighborhoods. I will promote policies and programs that improve the city current housing stock, increase investment in infrastructure and improve the quality and life in Fitchburg neighborhood. The council president leads the committee of the hold meetings. I believe that these meetings should be varied and provide the chance to learn about city initiatives, perform in-depth research and discussions and take the lead in a specific area significant to the city. These meetings should also provide opportunity for training for the Alders and inform our residents of current events. This committee goal should be to work together and come up with solution for the challenging issues facing our growing city. I look forward to working with this group of Alders to tackle the challenge facing Fitchburg, including emerging, emerging, emerging issues like COVID-19. Together, this body will provide a strength to our residents to move forward. I also look forward to working with Mayor Richardson and his administration to ensure the delivery of city services and maintenance of our infrastructure to better we can improve the quality of life of our citizens and build a stronger, safer and more inclusive city. I hope you can give me this opportunity to serve as your council president as we work together to move Fitchburg forward. Muchas gracias, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Now, since there is only one candidate, I think we can do a simple aye or nay vote all at one time, since it's not going to be much of a, well, there is no choice, but it's a pretty easy choice. So all in favor of electing Julia council president, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed, say nay. Excellent, all right. Congratulations, Julia.
Thank you, thank you guys.
All right, and first thing that you have to do now in your new job is do a standing committee appointments. Are you ready?
Okay, so, for public safety, I will, as a chair, I will nominate Sarah. As a member, Shannon and Joe. Personnel committee, Chair Dorothy, Alder Gabriella and Tom Clouter. Finance, I will nominate myself as a chair, and Alder Randy and Gabriella.
All right, thank you. And those are just appointments, there's no confirmations or anything like that? All right, so going forward to the next thing, mayoral appointments of council members to committees and commissions and you, all of you have this, I emailed this out, there's a couple of small edits, but the people affected know about this. So Randy is going to be on ag and rural affairs and also library board. Julia is going to be on CEDAC and healthy neighborhoods. Sarah is going to be on parks and public works. Shannon is going to be on EMS and landmarks. Joe is going to be on CEDAC and bike committee. Tom is on plant commission. Gabriella is on RCC, transportation and transit, and also tree advisory. And Dorothy is going to be on the commission on aging well, housing, healthy neighborhoods and she's still helping out on the census count committee. As you know, the mayor is, is either, can either be the chair of plant commission and public works or assign someone else. I will continue chairing plant commission. For public works though, I'm going to have a new chair and actually I'm appointing Dave Herbst, who's actually been on public works for over 20 years. And so he really has a lot of great knowledge to be that person there. And so he's on public works now, switching to the chair, his like citizen appointment is then open and you'll see someone who I think is extremely qualified to replace him on that role, but Dave Herbst is going to be the public works chair. And that is all I have for those committees. All right, so now, next thing to go down to is mayoral appointments of citizen members to committees and commissions and then these would get confirmed. And so what I did, you see a long list of reappointments here and I did the same thing I did last year where we asked everyone whose terms were up if they would like to continue. And some people said, no, I, I got other things and some people said, I'd like to continue. And again, this year, if someone said they would like to continue, then I just put them up for reappointment. So there's no one that said, I want to be reappointed. I said, nope, sorry, I'm going to appoint someone else. These are all people who are on the board and want to be reappointed and so I decided to reappoint those people. So first up, we at least needed a motion and then we can have, if there are any discussion, if there's any discussion, but if someone liked to move to approve, that'd be great.
I move a motion to approve. Second.
All right, seconded by Shannon. And so any discussion at all? Gabriella.
So since I'm new, I mean, I, I think it's amazing that these people want to continue serving, you know, public service is obviously a huge time commitment and I thank them for, for wanting to continue. I am curious if there's any way that we could see some information about them. I, I, you know, would be interested in supporting them, but I'd love to see their resumes or, you know, just to get a sense of why they want to continue serving. I don't know if there's any sort of application process. Obviously you said that you want to continue reappointments, but I'd be interested in just learning a little bit more about them before I have a chance to vote on them. Is that possible?
So I guess all these people, when they originally were appointed, you know, did that process and sent their applications and the council at the time kind of approved them. We probably have that somewhere. I guess, you know, all these people, staff, I wish I had staff as well, any concerns with these people, are they showing up to meetings and that type of stuff? And no staff has expressed any concerns with any of these people either. I know right now we're not having a lot of meetings, so that's nice, but I know we want to keep these things moving on and moving and going. So I think that we have those, but in terms of just, it would take, it's going to take a while, I guess, if we want people to respond back. Any other, yeah, Dorothy.
I don't have a problem in reappointing them, but I do think it would be nice particularly for all the new folks, for them to have a chance to see their original applications that they'd sent in, just as a way of getting, starting to get to know people. But we can still vote on them tonight.
Yeah, yeah, we can actually, of course, get that information, send it out after tonight, even if we approve it, we can send that so you kind of have a feel for who some of these people are. And I know there's quite a few people that are pretty knowledgeable and pretty, do a pretty great job, so.
I'll also just throw in sort of a, I guess, point of reference from, you know, the work that I do, I'm, I'm always, you know, looking at things from an equity lens and I, I just want to make sure if we're looking at the composition of, you know, the different commissions that, one, wondering what kind of, I guess, publication we're doing, you know, throughout Fitchburg and, you know, our committees representative demographically and also, you know, experience-wise of, you know, the diversity of our community. So I just wanted to kind of put that statement out there. I was reading through some of the membership and who's there. Excuse me, I have a three-year-old daughter. So I just, I just want to put that point out there and, you know, maybe it's something to consider for future recruitment periods, but I just want to make sure that we're, we have, you know, commissions that represent the entirety of Fitchburg.
Yeah, I know Lisa can send out how she advertises it, but always looking for new ways to advertise the openings. I know that assuming all the appointments on here get approved, we still have a couple openings on zoning, Board of Appeals, and I know in about a month here, there will be an opening on CEDAC as well, so there will be some more openings. And throughout the year, people for whatever reason end up dropping off because they move, something happens in their life, and so there will be more openings throughout the year. As much as Lisa and I, like Lisa Sanford, who's our exec assistant, we joke about how as soon as we get them filled, someone resigns for some reason, so we never actually seem to get them 100% filled, so. Other questions at all? All right, seeing none, then all in favor of approving the reappointments, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed, say nay. All right, good. So those are approved and now we have some new appointments. And so I believe that these were all in the packet, the applications and some people, I, normally for new appointments, we do have people come in and introduce themselves and why they're interested, but because of coronavirus, that didn't seem like the safest option. I did give everyone the option to send me a paragraph about themselves or I could just read their application form as well. And some people sent me something, some people just said, read the application form, and so I'll go through these. Just for the new people as well, when people apply, Lisa does email these out to everyone, so you will see as people apply for stuff in the future, these come in. We don't always have openings, but you will see these as they come in. So the first person that I have on here is Ellie Jin for the bike committee and she is interested because she says here, "I'm a year-round bike commuter and I've been for almost four years. I study epidemiology and population health at E.W. Madison, so I have a strong grasp of the public health and community benefits of active transportation and bicycling safety. I've been a member of the Bombay Cycling Club for two years and recently began a volunteer position on the ride planning committee. As a year-round bike commuter, I have a strong personal motivation to advocate for active transportation and cycling safety. I feel so grateful to live in a city that has such a strong bike infrastructure, but I feel there's still room to improve safety and visibility for cyclists." So that's a little bit about Ellie. Katie McDonald for the parks commission and she says on here.
Might we be able to vote on them one at a time?
We can do it whichever way people want. I'm, I'll go through them right now and then we can either do them individually or as a group if someone wants to.
If you know, can you say at least what district they live in?
I don't know for sure.
Okay, the first one is District 2.
Was that Rothmore Lane is District 2?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Katie McDonald lives on DeVore Road and she says here, "I am a civil engineer by trade. I've spent the last 10 years working within a landscape architect-led group that focuses on park and aquatic design. Specifically within Fitchburg, I designed the splash pad in McKee Farms Park several years ago. Part of that, I worked for a civil engineering company that focused on new development work and I was involved in the design and construction of several developments in Fitchburg. Swan Creek, Corey Hills, Oak Meadow, Nobal Ridge, et cetera. So I have a good background knowledge of parks design from a civil engineering perspective. I also worked for the city as an intern during college almost 20 years ago with Tracy Pass. I served on the town of Vermont Plant Commission for two years prior to moving to Fitchburg. I was a town engineer for the town of Lodi, which included sitting on the plant commission in an advisory capacity. I think sitting on committees is a great way to get to know my fellow residents and more about the city as a whole. I'm not willing to commit to something as time-consuming as plant commission again right now, I have two young kids and new business, but I've enjoyed being a part of the community development process prior to this. I have vested interests in parks design and would like to assist if I can within my own neighborhood. Traditionally have not worked on projects within Fitchburg, so I don't think this would be a conflict of interest. Would obviously make it known if any issues came up. I also have two elementary-age kids, so I have a vested interest in helping parks develop, or to help, helping develop parks that they and their cohorts can use." And then, other than that, she's Girl Scout leader, works on the Leopold Elementary School Green School Yard Committee. This is Parks. Yep. All right, so that was Katie McDonald.
And this is District 2.
That's District 2, okay. All right, then I have next on the list here is Tom Wadde for Police and Fire Commission and he is in District 2, I know. As I have here, he sent a paragraph in, "Tom Wadde is an attorney with 15 years of experience working with labor and employment issues. He has worked in every branch of state government and continues to remain engaged in local and state policy. Tom regularly works with issues related to personnel, human resources, policies and procedures. He's held leadership roles in many nonprofit organizations and continues to be active in the local community. Tom moved back to the Madison area five years ago and is proud to call Fitchburg home. Tom has the utmost respect for professionals in police and fire services and wants to give his time and talent to continue the tradition of strong protective services in Fitchburg." All right, now, the next person on his application, it's Christopher Sennelik, but he goes by Adam, and he did send me a paragraph and it says, "My name is Adam Sennelik. I serve as a research, research general engineer at the USDA Forest Service Forest Products Laboratory. Our work group primarily handles assessment of wood and wood-based structures, including urban wood. Work alongside, alongside silviculture specialists, biologists studying the base of species, as well as a variety of scientists looking at the tree from seed to tree and potentially beyond. The tree advisory committee sees the best place to put my knowledge, training and experience to the best use for the citizens of Fitchburg. This year, 2020, will mark my seventh year living in Fitchburg. I'm thankful for this opportunity to serve the community. As well known, the best way to grow is to lay down strong roots." Regards, Adam Sennelik. I, I don't have his address on the.
No, Oak Ridge. I think, is District 3 or 4, 3, 3?
I am not sure.
The east side of Sine Road.
Yeah.
That's 4. That's 4 on the east side then.
4, okay.
And so he was on tree advisory. We have another Parks Commission vacancy for Christopher Sina and he sent me a paragraph as well. I believe he's in 4. Mayor Richardson, thank you again for reaching out this week. Oh, here you go. "I'm a practicing landscape art tech licensed in the state of Wisconsin. I graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Madison in 2010 with a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture. I've worked for a mix of landscape designers, contractors and architects ever since. I also have years of field experience with my hands in the dirt, including an internship at Ulbrich Botanical Gardens. My diverse work history gives me a thorough knowledge of the design, use and maintenance of outdoor spaces. I've been involved with public, private, commercial and residential landscapes and understand the distinct needs of public green spaces and parks. I've lived and worked in Dean County since 2006." I've been proud to call Fitchburg my home since my husband and I purchased the house in September 2018. As a homeowner, I'm personally invested in the success of the city of Fitchburg and its parks. I believe a robust system of green spaces provides countless benefits to the community. As Fitchburg's parks develop and evolve, I would seek to ensure they remain attractive, useful, and accessible. As a landscape architect, I believe I bring a valuable set of knowledge and skills to help this city thoughtfully maintain, expand, and improve its network of parks. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to the opportunities to serve." Christopher Sina. And then I've got Linda Gorkels, I probably said that wrong, for the Commission on Aging Well. And her application, she says, "I serve as a caregiver for my mother who passed away at age 102. I have worked with adults of all ages through corporate training while on the UW School of Business faculty. I'm a part of the committee. All of us need to build our communities together. It's something I believe in. As part of Fitchburg's Active Women's Group, I spoke with Jill McCone about various ideas and she encouraged me to apply." And she is on Ivanhoe Glen, which I think is Four, District Four. And then finally, Kim Lobdell for the Board of Public Works. And she's on Kilkenny in District Two.
Oh, Ivanhoe is in District Two.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
So Kim says, "I have a BS degree in civil engineering and an MBA. I've been a working civil engineer for over 40 years with my main emphasis on public works process. I understand the planning, design, construction, management, and financial aspects of public works projects. I feel I could be a valuable asset to the Board of Public Works because of my background and knowledge. I've been a resident of Fitchburg for 25 years and have seen the community grow and change. I feel I could be a fair, unbiased member of the committee and provide valuable insight to the city staff. I believe in giving back to the community where you live and work to help make it a better place for all. I've been a member of the Plan Commission and the Transportation and Transit Commission for many years. I've served on the Ford Fitchburg Task Force and have been a member of the Chamber of Commerce since this deception. I'm also active in community projects, including the library, Kids Building Wisconsin, Fitchburg Days, and the Highlands of Southern Neighborhood Association." And for those who don't know Kim, she is also the owner of KL Engineering. So very invested and a successful business owner. So those are the new appointments for tonight. And so I guess, I heard some people ask about going through these individually. We can go through them individually or as a whole, or if there's anything that someone wants to take out of the group. Doesn't really matter to me, I guess, a whole lot. Julia?
Uh, I have a question regarding Kim, because she said that the transportation, she, her appointment is going to expire in April. So you're gonna have an opening in Transportation too, isn't it?
Yeah, so I talked with Verona Teacher today, who was interested in that position, who had applied, sent an application. His name is Jason Strauss. But there was, so there is an opening. It'll be next week. We'll have that come in.
Okay, so are we planning to promote these new, you know, openings?
We can continue promoting. We weren't promoting openings, but yeah, because we have the zoning board of review. And then also, we will have another CETA position coming up, so we'll continue promoting those. And like I said, you know, any ideas and other ways to get those out is great. And obviously, everyone here has some of their own networks as well, so. Gabriella?
I'd just like to go through where we're currently advertising the positions. I'm curious what, what has been done in the past.
Yeah, we have, those positions are on the website. So it shows where there's vacancies within the various departments. So anybody that's interested in serving can look through the various committees and see where there's opportunities. It also shows the terms of those individuals on there, so they can see when an opportunity would be coming up.
Oh, sorry. I'll let you finish your thought.
Okay. In a lot of the situations, also, the various alders, you all, would let residents of your district know of opportunities that are open up. I know the mayor does the same. And staff works with the existing committees in terms of whether they want to continue in their role for a reappointment. So those are the various ways we work with that now.
All right, yeah, Joe, go ahead.
Clarifying that question, or that piece. If somebody's term is up in 2020, do we, you know, do we assume that's going to be a vacancy or that we're voting for them to continue or what? I just want to be sure for like recruiting purposes, if I'm talking to somebody about, you know, joining a certain committee, that I know there's actually going to be an opening.
Well, the ones that the mayor gave all of the reappointments of the individuals that terms would be expiring that were still interested. And then those appointments that he added were individuals to fill the vacancies. So that would be it as of now, until either somebody moved out of town or, you know, had another commitment where they couldn't serve.
Yeah, and like I mentioned, I think it was end of February, beginning of March, staff reached out to everyone whose term was expiring to see if they wanted to continue or not. And then actually asked staff as well, you know, any issues, are people making meetings and that type of stuff as well? So, you know, we don't always know ahead of time. And some of these people that applied six months ago, a year ago, actually, and we keep those so that we have that. So if there's something that people are interested in, they can submit anytime. And then, you know, the openings come up, we have that. I have Dorothy and then Randy next after that. Go ahead, Dorothy.
Thank you. It's not necessarily a given, just because someone's term is coming due, that even if they want to continue, that they will be allowed to continue, correct? We can still consider other people?
Uh, that's up to the body. That's not something that I've done, is kick people off. I was actually, and that's partly, I guess, personal experience. I was on Parks for nine years. And then the mayor at the time said, "All right, thanks. See you later." And I kind of went, oh, wait a minute. I thought I was doing pretty good on here. And so that's a possibility, but that's not how I've done it. But the council can obviously deny anyone. Randy, go ahead.
Do we, as alders, see, see all applicants? Is that forwarded to us?
Yeah.
But it is. It's not just what you present to us and then we vote on it. We see all, so we know what, who has applied, but.
Yeah, as new applicants come in, they get sent to everyone. And then I decide who I want to kind of bring forward for hopefully approval. And then the council can say yes or no to those people.
Okay.
If they say no, then I have to find someone new.
Sure.
And I think that you can't be nominated again for a year if you're denied to the same committee, anyway.
Very good, okay.
All right.
One more.
Gabriella?
I like Gabriella.
I'm just curious, so, it, oh yeah, I'm talking, microphone. So I'm curious, do, it sounds like the process is that you kind of accept applications on a rolling basis and then fill them with people that, that then fit those community vacancies? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
For the most part, we do advertise as well, certain times of the year, but the applications are open anytime. People can apply at any time.
So I, I feel like we should try to, I, I wonder if there's a way that, I would be interested in working on a way to, to make that clearer to the community. And I'll just like give you a quick anecdote from my personal experience, because I'm obviously someone that's very interested in city, which is why I ran for office. But back in August of last year, I, there was an opening on the Parks Commission, which I saw on Facebook. And I looked it up, just, I was curious about the timeline. And the opening that was posted on Facebook was August 1st. And then there was actually a coffee with you on the 10th of August, which I was really excited about, because I was like, oh, I'll go talk to Mary Richardson and we'll have a conversation. And when I talked to you, you told me that the position had already been filled. And as somebody that, that was interested, but, you know, the opportunity had already passed and I hadn't realized that. I just think that, that, that practice of, and I think it's great that there are people that are coming to you on a regular basis and, and are interested in committees, like those are people that should 100% be considered and maybe they're the right people. But I just wonder if there are people in the community that are interested, that don't realize that they need to apply on a rolling basis, that they're considered when opportunity arises. And I just wonder who we're missing in the community that might be really engaged and interested in being involved, but that just doesn't feel like they, they have the opportunity. So I just wanted to say that and I'd be, I think we can talk about this in the future, but yeah, I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, I was looking for ways to improve and I think we can, you know, do a better job of advertising throughout the year. It might make sense to have an option on the application form that just says, you know, "I'm interested to be on, you know, whenever something comes up, you know, let me know." Might, you know, I don't want to put Transportation and Transit and have Parks come up and be like, oh, I want to be on Parks, but I put Transportation and Transit, so they might, and we, well, sometimes for some of those committees, it's harder to find people, like zoning Board of Appeals. And so we do some, have in the past, sent out something to everyone who's applied for anything. Just say, "Hey, I know you applied for Parks," wherever it is, "this is open if you're interested in this instead." But definitely can do a better job of going year-round, because we do have that and we do keep those applications as well. Joe, go ahead.
Are there, are there term limits on the serving on a commission? I, I just say that because, you know, it's always good, you know, organizational practice to, you know, have new blood. I know, you know, at United Way, we started implementing like six-year term limits for some of our, like, funding teams and teams that make important decisions, just so that, you know, as good as it is to have, you know, institutional knowledge, it's also good to make sure that we're, you know, bringing in, you know, new folks. I'm wondering if that has, had ever been considered a practice for the city commissions? If it's ever been brought up for discussion?
It's, there are currently not term limits for anything like that. The only term limited thing is that whoever's the chair can only be chair for four years. But it's something that we can definitely look to change in the future. But there is no term limits at this point in time on that, so. I want to keep sure, make sure we keep moving. And so I guess what I would say is, let's take them as, I didn't ask for a motion. Well, I asked for a motion for the entire group, but if there's someone that someone wants to take out and discuss individually, we can do that. So if someone wants to make a motion to approve the new appointments and second, and then we can take out anyone that someone wants to do, talk about individually. Dorothy?
I'll move approval en masse, but I would like to separate Tom O'Day and.
Okay, first, wait, one thing at a time. First, so first I heard a motion to approve, right? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Tom, all right. And so Dorothy, there's a couple that you want to take out and discuss individually?
Correct.
Okay, which two are those?
Uh, Tom O'Day and Kim Lobdell.
All right, anyone else that someone wants to take out separately at all?
I have a question regarding, they are one of the, the person is, is the neighbor of another person in a committee. And my question is, do we want to have too many people from the same area or do we want to have more like a balanced committee with people from different districts? Or we don't want to have accumulation of too many people from one district in one committee? I don't know.
Yeah, I guess I don't know what you're talking about, but I guess the question is if you want to take someone out of the list of new appointments right now, more than anything else. So is there someone that you want to take out to discuss further, Julia?
Yes, let me see what it asks. I saw that in the application. One second.
The Chris Sennelik and Christopher Sina are both on No Oaks Ridge within a couple of houses of one another.
But they're on different committees.
Different committees.
One is for tree, one is for parks.
Right.
One second. Oh, it's Katie McDonald.
So you want to take Katie McDonald out and, okay, we'll take out Katie and discuss that.
Question about that, I have a.
All right, we'll just take it out and discuss it separately then. Oh, I can't hear you. All right, so is there anyone else that someone wants to remove from now? All right, seeing none, then to approve Ellie, Christopher, or it's actually not Christopher, but Christopher Sennelik, Christopher Sina, and Linda. So to approve those, please say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, so those ones are approved. All right. Next, we got these three people here, so I need individual motions first for Katie McDonald. If someone can make a motion to approve Katie McDonald, that'd be great.
Uh, move a motion, but I, I.
Right, yep, okay. So moved by Julia, is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by, I'll give it to Sarah. Okay, Julia, do you have a question or you want to say something?
Yeah, my only concern here is that, you know, we have, she's a neighbor of another people that is in the park committee. I think they live in the same block. My question is, you know, it's great that she want to apply and, you know, I don't have issue, but I just, I looked at that in the package and it's, you know, so I want to know what is the composition of that park committee right now, do you know? From district that represent different, you know, to have a balanced.
I don't have the committees memorized. I know Patrick Chaney, who we approved as reappointments in District Three. Sue Easterday is on the edge of District Two on the edge, John Osmondson.
I believe David's Two.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, David's Two, Two. We are going to have.
Mark Vivian, I think he's Two as well, correct?
No.
I don't know where Mark lives. I don't know where people live.
Not sure either.
My question to all, if you, my question is to all of you fellow alders, you are okay, we having a lot of concentration of people from one district? You know, but we are going to have three people from districts through Two.
All right, I got Tom next on the list. Go ahead, Tom.
I'm asking the question.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
You know, I, I just think you're really getting into the weeds here where you don't have to go. Due to the fact that if two people are neighbors to each other and they apply for the same committee, it's okay. What's wrong with that? The city's never got this involved with districts. We've never done this. And the deal is, is I want people to apply. And the way to get people to apply is stop this district stuff. And furthermore, you know, the mayor brings the name forward and us as alders, we can deny the person or okay the person. So you still have a kick at the can on that. But, you know, the, the deal is, is it's not up to us, the person's apply. The mayor gets the applications. We don't, I don't. And he either says yes or no. On the time limit, something Dorothy brought up. Some people have served for a long time and then they won't serve again. That's up to the person involved. As far as I'm concerned, I want people to serve. And now if the mayor takes them off a committee, that's his prerogative. That's what he's the mayor for. And then you can say, no, I want to keep them, or no, I don't want them. So, I mean, we're getting into the districts here and I just don't think you want to go there. I don't think it's needed. As the people are watching tonight, I want them to apply. I don't want to worry about a district or I'm in District Three and my neighbor Jim applied to the Parks Department, so I can't apply. Don't go there. Don't go there. Just let them apply. It's hard, and the mayor knows, because I've been there, it's hard to fill these positions. And now we're getting into the weeds.
All right, I've got Dorothy and then Julia after that.
I was going to suggest that might be something that we can look at in the next year or two. If all of our districts were relatively similar to one another, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But fact of the matter is, we have various neighborhoods that are incredibly different from one another, even within districts. So I, I want to be conscious of having a good mix in all of our committees as much as is reasonably possible. So it might be something we look at in the next year or two.
And then a year, we're going to change the districts, anyway. All right, Julia, go ahead.
Yeah, so I want to clarify something with, something that Tom mentioned. It's nothing about being wrong. We are asking question and this is our role. And we are not saying that it's want to have too many people from a district. We are not, this is not the point. The point is that there are some districts that they are totally unrepresented in commission. And we need to be sure that, yes, we need to have some representation, because there are districts that we need to have, you know, they need, we need to have people to step up and be, and be in those committees. And maybe they don't, they, they don't know how to apply, because we don't reach to them in a way that, you know, how that they are disposition open. That's it. You know, this is an old thing that we are discussing to improve for future years, you know? This is what we're, you know, they are, how we can improve this process, so we have more people applying for this position, for this committee and commission for in future years. This is what we're trying to do here, Tom, okay?
Yep, and I'll keep, you know, working on ways to improve it and make sure people have a chance throughout the year as well. Tom, go ahead.
Julia, there's been committees. Uh, Julia, there's been committees that are out there that are filled. In fact, somebody asked me about the highway, the, uh, um, Department of Public Works, and I already know it's full. But I tell them to apply to get their name on file.
All right, seeing nothing else for Katie. I guess, uh, all in favor of approving Katie McDonald, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that's approved, and now I need a motion to approve Tom O'Day.
I'll move motion.
All right, moved by Tom, is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Shannon. Any further discussion on Tom? Dorothy?
Yeah, I had a number of questions, not necessarily as much about Tom, but again, of the makeup of the committee. Um, we are not replacing someone from District 1, um, the only person that was on the committee from one of the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative districts. Um, because Police and Fire is so involved in the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative districts, I think it's absolutely imperative that we have at least one person on, um, that committee that can represent those districts.
I'll, uh, I'll answer that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Joe, make sure you, you get recognized.
Raise your hand.
Yep, I'll get you. Yep, go ahead, Joe. Oh, Joe, go ahead.
Okay, um, so, the other, um, thing I have to just think about, um, you know, on this committee is, um, makes, right? So, you have, um, you have an attorney, you know, being presented, you also have, uh, two former law enforcement officers. Um, I, I'm thinking about past members of that committee, uh, who have been in the advocacy space. Greg Jones is, you know, one example. Um, and thinking about, you know, ha, making sure that somebody is in that seat that thinks about, um, the, um, I guess, social justice lens of, of policing, and understanding, you know, restorative justice, understanding, um, you know, the, the tensity that can, that, or the tenseness that can exist, uh, often between, um, you know, communities of color and the, and law enforcement. I know that there are two members who are, you know, people of color on the committee, but I'm also thinking very intentionally about making sure that, um, you know, who we're appointing for that fourth seat, um, also sort of understands that tension, because, um, you know, the, the moments that we're in, uh, here in our community, in the United States as a whole, we, we wanna make sure that we, we have that perspective represented as well. Um, so, I, I would, you know, you know, in addition to Dorothy's point about making sure that there's somebody from, uh, the HNI neighborhoods, that there is somebody who sort of understands, um, that balance.
All right, yeah, I mean, in, in general, I have no idea where most people live on any of our committees, so. Uh, Gabriella?
I was just, um, since, you know, obviously, we have a, a plan commission meeting at 6:30, i- is it, will we wanna table the rest of these decisions till next week? I know, um, but I just wanted to bring it up and see if that was something we wanted to do.
I think if we got a few, I mean, if we go over a few minutes, uh, so, if there's some people filing in for plan commission, we're hopefully gonna finish this up real, in the next five or 10 minutes here. Um, we, the next, if we get past this and Kim, the next two are gonna be kinda nothing, so. Valerie, we might have to push back, sorry, Valerie. Uh, anything else? Uh, Dorothy, go ahead.
I would move to table Tom O'Day to next week.
Uh, postpone, actually is probably the proper. All right, is there a second at all?
Second.
All right, seconded by Julia. Discussion on postponing at all? Seeing nothing? Oh, Tom, go ahead.
Through the other people too? I mean, what's your thought, Mayor?
Uh, so, the only last one we have left is Kim Lobdell tonight, and then there will be some people next week as well, who I didn't get in, in time to, to review tonight. So, we could do this next week with...
So, there's, is there any rush on appointing Tom or not?
Uh, no, they just met, yeah, they're not meeting in the next week.
We're okay?
Yeah, yeah. All right, all in favor of postponing till next week, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, we'll do that one next week. Uh, motion on Kim Lobdell, please. Dorothy?
And the, the, this was just a real quick question about...
I need a motion first, though. I need a motion, Dorothy, before we can discuss. Dorothy, Dorothy.
Those questions.
Dorothy, I need a motion before we can discuss.
Oh, I will move to approve Kim.
Okay.
Second.
All right, seconded by Julia. Okay, I'm sorry, and your question was her business?
My question was, um, she works for a company that does a lot of work for the city, a lot of the engineering work that goes into, um, questions in public works. How much might she end up having to recuse herself from discussions and voting in that committee?
Go ahead, Pat, yeah, Pat, go ahead.
Um, in terms of volume of projects, very little. Um, they are involved, or have been involved, in a couple major projects in the city. Um, but, uh, we have many other projects that come before that, that board. Uh, so, I would say that her involvement number of project is under 10%.
And obviously, she would recuse herself from anything that's related to her company. All right, seeing nothing else. All in favor of approving Kim, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And anyone opposed, nay? All right, and that is approved. Uh, we have a couple of quick resolutions. Uh, the first one is, we have to do this every year, designate the official newspaper, and it has to be, I believe, one that publishes daily, which is why we always use the State Journal. And so, and, um, I've, maybe someone that's a little more experienced can kinda let people know, kinda give, show the example of how you get these approved. Uh, would someone like to do a motion?
I'll do approve.
Uh, so, you have to read the whole thing. Yeah, you gotta read the whole thing. Yeah, go, go for it.
All right, so, Resolution R 78-20. Uh, whereas the City of...
Oh, no, 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 just the thing on the agenda, sorry, just the, it's on the agenda.
Just the...
Yeah, just the title on the agenda.
Okay. Thanks for your patience. All right, motion to approve Resolution R 78-20, designated the, the, designating the official newspaper.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, got a second in there? Uh, any questions at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, and we'd like to do the next one here.
I'd move to approve Resolution R 79-20, Designating Official Posting Locations.
Thank you, Sarah, is there a second? Seconded by Randy. Uh, and then this is just where we post agendas and stuff like that. We have to just approve that every year as well. It's always the same thing every year. All in favor, say, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Gabriella, sorry.
I was wondering, uh, if, is there any possibility of ever adding additional posting locations? Is that something that's ever been discussed, or could be discussed in the future?
Tracy? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, it has not been discussed, um, it is a possibility, although the three posting locations make it very easy for staff to be able to do that. They don't have to leave the building. Our one location is out in the foyer area, we have the senior center and the community center, so it can be done in a very timely fashion.
Yeah.
And I believe that this doesn't preclude us from posting other places. These are just the places where we will for sure always post, and I know that there's been other things that we post other places. So, this is just saying, a bare minimum, we'll post here.
Yeah.
We can post other places as well.
Is there an, uh, is there an appropriate time for me to bring forward that discussion? Like how, or I can talk about that later.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, Dorothy?
I was just gonna suggest, I, I would love to have a posting bulletin board at the two fire stations, so it would be closer to where residents live.
Yeah, we can look into that.
Future discussion.
All right. Seeing no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Uh, Valerie, thank you for waiting patiently. Um, we're getting short on time, I don't know if you wanna say a couple of highlights, and we can have you back next week, maybe, sorry.
That's, that's absolutely fine, I can give you a brief rundown, or if you'd rather just wait until next week, that's fine too. Just let me know how you folks wanna proceed.
I think at this point, and if there's one or two really important things you wanna mention, otherwise, if you could do it next week, I would appreciate it.
I will plan on it.
All right, thank you.
I guess I would...
Yeah, go ahead, if you also say something specific.
I just wanted to, I guess, before now and next week, if you have any questions, please give me a call or send me an email, and I'll be happy to help.
I know there's a lot of information in the packet, so as you read through that, you might have questions for her next week. Uh, Gabriella?
Yeah, I did read what was in the packet, but is there any additional resources about Robert's Rules of Order that would be useful? Um, like a, like a training tutorial, YouTube videos, I don't know if there's anything out there.
Yeah, the Lea- the League of Wisconsin Municipalities has a good location, and they, um, they normally do a, um, a one-day training for new, newly-elected officials, but given the time we're in, I don't know if that's gonna happen, um, on location. It may be web-based, or it may be delayed, so, uh, they go over a, a nice, long section of Robert's Rules, but Valerie is a great resource for that too, to just maybe sit down and ask her the questions.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, and I think, uh, for all the new people, and actually, anyone that's not new as well, um, hopefully, the League can do something this year for new members, kinda give you a background, and we'll definitely, uh, give that to you, so you can sign up for that, if you can make it, hopefully you can, so. All right, thank you, Valerie. Uh, our next council meeting is next week, and next committee hold is not until May. So, nothing else on the agenda for tonight, but we'll see everyone in one week. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Tom, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, thank you, everyone, see you in a week.